Okay, it's already 5:01, so let's get this started with a moment of silence. All right, and I'm sure Kiana will be in shortly. So let's begin. Okay. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's July 27th, 5:02 PM. And with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Peterson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for... Um, let's see, let me go into the procedures. Thank you for doing that, Stephen. Now we'll go into the procedures and I will welcome everyone to the study session of the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board. On March 30th, 2020, Governor Doug Ducey announced that Arizona schools would be closed for the rest of the year due to the COVID-19 health crisis. In early April, when his stay-at-home order was issued, governmental functions, including school board governing board meetings, were exempted from the order. So while it is legal to have an in-person school district governing board meeting, our district is choosing to exercise safe social distancing for our meetings by using a virtual meeting platform. The following will be the rules we are using for our meetings. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference. We are meeting by use of WebEx conferencing platform and live streaming through YouTube, which allows for members of the public to view and/or listen to this meeting. You can access the live stream at MPSAZ.org/live. If you need accommodations, please contact Martha Head, Assistant to the Superintendent and Governing Board, at 480-472-0201. All other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practical. I will say "practical" instead of "practicable." A recording from this meeting will be available to the public via our district's Board Docs online software within three business days of the meeting. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. Thank you. Okay. All right, with that, I am going to turn the time over to Julie Bacon, our SBA expert and our facilitator trainer today. Welcome, Julie. Thank you for being with us today. Oh, you're on mute.
Well, there's number one rule of being a trainer: unmute yourself. Thank you so much for having me, and I'm excited to continue the conversations that we had during the last training. And I'm going to now just go ahead and share my screen so that you all can see the PowerPoint and, um... Hopefully... There we go. So, thank you so much. We will just get started and do some of the training. One of the things that we did the last time that we were together was we talked about communication protocols. And I wanted to just go through what we talked about last time, the stuff that we got done. And then also we'll continue to do additional items in the protocols. So this is the first thing that we came up with, the regular communication. The superintendent will provide weekly status reports to board members via their Mesa Public Schools email address, and it'll be loaded into Board Docs. And Elaine and Dr. Forless were going to work together to figure out what kind of information needed to go in there or what was best to go in there. And I just want to do kind of a status check. Where are we at with that? Is that going well? Are there any issues?
Ooh, good question. Okay.
I see a lot of shaking heads, yes, but I just wonder if anyone has any thoughts, any comments they'd like to make.
I guess I didn't remember that, Dr. Forless, you and I were going to talk a little bit about the status report. So maybe we can do that better. I totally forgot that. Did you, or?
Well, you know, President Minor, I think that when you and I talked, we were talking about, it's kind of like the three little bears. We were trying to find out what was going to be the just-right chair. Not too much, not too big, you know, and not too little, and so we wanted to make sure it was just right. So I think my recollection was I was going to get started and then get feedback from all of you to say, "Does it feel like it's the just-right amount? And does it feel like it's the just-right amount of detail? And do we like Fridays? And that I send them to you on Friday and then send a text to say it's in your inbox? That's more, I would love to hear if that's working for you.
I love that they're coming as an email to our inbox because we don't have that sliding issue with, that we have when we're trying to look on our phone in Board Docs, how we, you try to make it bigger and it moves it to another screen and it's kind of frustrating. So I love that you're sending them, and I love the last line in this, that it's about informing, not involving. Because, you know, it's about letting us know what's happening and so we can, we're aware, but it's not our... It's not our job to, I guess certainly if we have concerns or want more information, we can call you. But it's, it's just, for me, it has been just right, enough information without too much.
And I do know that... Thank you. And I do know that some of you prefer PDF instead of a Google link. You prefer the PDF because it... Martha and I will make sure that you get the PDF. I'm not always super good at that part of it, but I will, between Martha and I, we will make sure that any of the Google links are also sent to you as a PDF.
I love it. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Easy to do.
Okay, so that sounds like that's going well. We're going to keep on moving here. Emergency communication. Hopefully you haven't had to do this yet. There hasn't been an emergency yet, so, but this is what we talked about. And, you know, again, this is probably something you're going to have to refine if it needs refining, you know, as you encounter these situations, you know, at the start of the school year. I know there's been a lot of communication because we're in kind of a weird time in board superintendent world. But anything about this that we need to review?
No, Martha's on top of everything, so we're good.
Good. Okay, so we talked about board-to-supervisor communication, and there's an email address, superintendent@mesapublicschoolsaz, or by phone. Routine matters can be shared with the board secretary, who can then coordinate some conversation or answers from the superintendent. The one thing that we talked about was that if one board member got information about something specific, all board members got the same information. And I think that's a really good expectation to set so that everybody has the same information. So you're walking into meetings and you're walking into conversations at the grocery store with everyone having the same information to share.
Andy, would you, you would prefer this email address because I'm using the A4-less one, but this, this is what you would prefer?
No, I would prefer my email. Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, because this one takes a delay. It has to be forwarded to me, so we'll change that.
Got it. I'll change that in our notes going forward.
And I think Julie can update to that is that we started a spreadsheet that every time I get a question, I add it and then add the answer to it, and then that's part of status. So every week, the newest questions are highlighted in yellow, and then the older questions are down at the bottom. So that every, I think that was such a good idea because you may not know to ask a question as a board member that somebody else asked, but you're super interested in. So that's how we're managing those questions.
And I also like, yeah, I also like that you're keeping them in the queue because I know there's so many times when you think, "I know we talked about that," or "I know I heard about that." And then you have somewhere to go back and look.
It's our ever-growing list.
Yes, exactly. Okay, so these are the agreements that we talked about. There was no, I don't think, any issues with this. It was, you know, more about support, not surprises, feedback, acknowledgement, and all of those things. So, and then we also talked about the board-superintendent communication. We know that direction is given, you know, when a majority of the board votes to give direction. And so these are some of the issues, support, not surprises, again. Any questions about any of that?
The only thing that I would mention is that one of the things that Dr. Forless has been doing, which I'd like to continue, is that not only does she acknowledge that she's received the concern and that she expresses that the concern will be addressed, that there, there is then follow-up, there's follow-through on what the status of the concern is at this point. In other words, there is information on progress. So rather than, as a board member, me trying to keep track of every issue that we've talked about, Dr. Forless is very good about keeping us up to date on the progress of a concern that we have had, and I really appreciate that.
Great. Hi, Kiana.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I see Kiana's entered the room.
Oh, good, good, good.
So I wanted to make sure that we haven't missed anything, that maybe we want to go back quickly and kind of run through to make sure, if you don't mind, just about the communication.
Yeah. Okay, so Kiana, what we were talking about was just reviewing that, the items that we talked about with communication protocols, the first training. And then we're going to expand on that a little bit more and enter some new areas of communication protocols. So the regular communication, it sounds like this status update is working well. Dr. Forless shared that she would really like your feedback, everyone's feedback, all the board members' feedback about the information that's in there and how that information is being relayed. Any concerns about that at all? Is Kiana talking? I can't tell.
I am. Yeah. I think with this, I think the status updates, I get it, and I've already talked to Dr. Forless about this. The main thing that I'm concerned about is the opportunity for her to be the conduit to share concerns that we have as individual board members. Since we actually can't meet with each other, like maybe you can talk to one board member, but not all, it's too, I think sometimes things are coming so fast and so furious. Isn't that circling back? So again, if I'm talking to the president about an issue, that means I can't talk to the rest of the board members. So say if the president isn't blindsided, then the other board members are blindsided. If she's not that conduit to relay information with us, and I think that is vital. I understand the complexity of it, but we don't have, it would actually be Dr. Forless or someone else. I think that's the thing that could keep us on track better if there's a concern or if something comes up. Because like, for instance, if I have a concern and I, you know, Dr. Forless, I'm not sure about this, I'm thinking about it, then she relates that to Ginny, and Ginny goes, "You know, I was kind of wondering about that, but I kind of didn't know enough to go like a deep dive, but I'm kind of want information on that, too." And then it circles and it gives time to kind of ideate around that item, rather than, again, I saw later in the slides, we individually start doing that research, and then I think that gives more potential to actually, for it to be problematic. And I would say that's one of the things that would be helpful. And I think it would be helpful for us, but also for her because if we individually do that, hence we have information that we haven't relayed back and circled regarding what we're thinking about an issue.
Yeah, I think we, and Dr. Forless, just, I think that we talked about that. Where did we come up with that? Board members have requested the superintendent provide, if you look on the slide that's up there now, information to all board members that it may have resorted, resulted from a conversation with, you know, one board member. So just trying to keep that. I think that's what you're talking about and what your thoughts are around. So...
Yes.
Okay. And, Dr. Forless, do you want to just talk about that document that you were just sharing with us?
Yes, and thank you, Julie. And Mrs. Sears, we were talking about that spreadsheet of questions, that that was a really good idea that came up when we met in June, to be able to say if a board member has questions, make sure that everybody gets the question and everybody gets the answer. And so that is the spreadsheet that I've been including in status, and then highlighting in yellow the most current or most recent questions at the top, and then just, you know, allowing those to compile over time. So we had thought that that was something that was working well to get all the right information out to everybody so that it is consistent.
Okay, so that, it sounds like that's going to be the document and the method that you use for that concern, Kiana. And, you know, as with everything, you're going to have to circle back and talk about this in three months and in six months, and, you know, make sure it's working for everybody. So, okay, I'm going to keep going, and then emergency communication. I'm fairly certain you haven't had any emergency communication yet. Although, doesn't everything feel like emergency communication right now? Like, la-ha!
Yes.
So, so this, you know, will remain to be seen, and again, circling back and making sure that this is working for everyone as you go through this first year is important. The one thing that's in this slide, Kiana, that we talked about is that we have this superintendent at Mesa Public Schools AZ email address, and Dr. Forless indicated that she would prefer it just go straight to her email address. So I'm going to change that. So her personal email address is really the best way to get that communication in email to her.
Hey, Dr. Forless, sorry to interrupt you. But would you prefer that we, if we are sending an email, to also text you? Because if you're getting emails like we are, or is it, are you okay with being able to see that? You're on top of it better than I am, if you can. I, when it's an important email, I like getting a text. Even if I, even if I have seen it, it feels good to know you that I haven't missed anything.
Yeah, I appreciate that question. You know, just, if it's a typical email, just send it as a regular email. But if it's something that is time-sensitive, or it's something that you think is of really high priority and need to get information about, that you want to make sure I see it, then I would say, text, say, "Please check your email. I just sent you something that really needs your attention." So that added layer for something super important. But otherwise, I try to stay up on it pretty quickly.
She, she has a little help with that, too. I bet Martha helped with that.
She'll scan and say, "You better pay attention."
Board members don't have assistants at home. These days, we need it, but not normally.
Only lightbulb changers.
Yes, lightbulb changers, exactly. Okay, so these were the agreements that we talked about. Everyone seemed fine with those. So, you know, I think the main issue with this is support, not surprises. You know, informing, not involving, those are, I think, kind of the key phrases as we go through this. And then the board-to-supervisor communication agreements.
How are we defining direction?
Well, so I think what this is referring to is the board wants the superintendent to do something specific. So you have a conversation at a board meeting about, I'm trying to think of something, like the fees that organizations pay to use your facilities. And the board thinks they're too high, and everybody on the board agrees that this is something that the superintendent should investigate further. So what you want to not do is have one board member say or believe that just because they've told the superintendent something, that it has to be done. So this is that, you know, the board has power as a whole, not as individuals. It doesn't mean that the superintendent can't do something that a board member has asked them to look into. But it means if it's something significant, and it's going to take a significant amount of time, or it's going to involve significant staff time to complete, it might be better to have consensus from the whole board, and it's something that you want the superintendent to pursue.
Okay, so a suggestion or something like that is not necessarily a direction, but significant is what then we need to move on. Got it?
Yeah, okay, yep.
I think, I think if I could butt in just a little bit. I think right now we're going through such challenging times with our administration as a whole being so over-involved, over-innated, excuse me, inundated with so much work right now that that is even more applicable now than typical. You probably have more time to do that, just as a kind courtesy to a board member. But right now, every bit of time that you have to take away from this would be challenging. And then and then that for the board, other board members would feel like, wait a minute, we gave a direction that this would be a priority, and now we've got the, some one person has got the superintendent doing something else that isn't what the board would necessarily agree to. So that would be the other issue with that, I would think.
I have questions about suggestions, right? Say you, two things. I know I saw like an item that I was like, oh, this might be a good item for all of our employees to have, like the Buddy Keys. There are this touchless type of device that people can use. Where does those type of suggestions go and how?
Well... I would think that would go to the superintendent, and that would be a point of reference for the superintendent in the decisions that he or she is making as they're going through getting ready for school to open, or getting ready for staff and students to be back on campus. And I think it's, you know, we all have unique connections in the community. So there are often times where you'll know of something that someone else won't. And it, and I think it's perfectly great for you to share that with the superintendent. But the expectation shouldn't be if you tell the superintendent about that, that you're going to have it the following week. But I do think, you know, providing the information that you may have as a member of the community or connection that you have, I think that's appropriate. You just need to allow the superintendent the operational ability to do the things that he or she is deeming best for the district at that point in time. I make suggestions all the time, Kiana. My superintendent doesn't always listen to them, but I make them.
All right, because I know I have a few of those. I have also with bullet number three, where it says, "For the impartiality, both positive and negative feedback, understand what the superintendent has directed us. Is like, this is how I get better, or this is getting feedback." I share the same sentiments when it becomes, when it comes to issues and are either suggestions or something that we're voting on that for information, that there be a pros and a con submitted for the information. Because I think staff has, and we know, I don't think they know, have much more time to vet a situation and kind of figure out the, what the information is. And, you know, I know we each have our own personalities, but definitely I know that's one thing that I'm big on, that like knowing the details and what's going on and say, okay, I can see how this is being good, but knowing kind of what the concerns are and what's been considered. Like if the, if the superintendency is deciding, oh, we're going to do this, I kind of know like a bullet point, like this is, you know, this issue and what it looks like.
Right, so for example, using your, using your keyless entry situation, you would want to see, this is who we're recommending, but we looked at five different vendors. We, these, you know, this was, the reason we chose this one was because of this. This is one issue that, you know, we're going to keep an eye on, that we think, you know, could potentially have, we could have problems with. So you're just talking about like kind of a full, you don't want like detail, detail, detail on every single proposal, but we looked at five proposals. We decided on this one because here what we see the pros, here is what cons are with maybe every one of them, you know. So, so does that sound like that's reasonable to the rest of the board and Dr. Forless?
For sure.
Okay.
Julie, on this same, on this same slide that we've got up in front of us, what, when you say board members will be impartial, give me a definition of what, what you mean by impartial.
I think what this is referring to is remaining, doing your homework and going into a meeting to listen to discussion with open ears. This is about not making your mind up before you walk in the room, but listening to the perspectives of your board members, listening to the perspective of your staff, and then making a decision based on the homework that you did and what you heard in the meeting. Because there's really no point in an open meeting or a meeting in the public if you've already made up your mind and you're not going to listen to other board members or the staff or community members who might be commenting on it. So that's, I think, really what that means, is like going into a discussion or a vote with an open mind.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think the last item, support, not surprises, goes both ways. And you're talking about it. I mean, we as board members don't want to be surprised, but we also don't want to surprise our superintendent with coming to a board meeting with something that was not anticipated. We have multiple opportunities to talk to the superintendent prior to a board meeting if we have concerns or questions about a topic. And that's where that should be vetted out, not in a board meeting. So I, I think in our last board meeting, there were some surprises on both sides. And so I think, hopefully, this is an opportunity that we can work through that so we don't have that experience. At least we can try very hard not to have that experience again because I think that was a moment that was very difficult for board members as well as our superintendent. And I believe we need to support our superintendent. We need to protect and promote our superintendent, and we're not doing that if we are surprising her. But in, but if we're more prepared, that should be less likely to happen as well. So...
Yes.
That's more prepared by her.
I think that's what I have the point of the, I remember reading online, somebody saying, you know, "We've got to elect board members who will ask hard questions and ask them in open meeting." And, and I remember thinking, no, that's, that's not what we want from board members. We want board members who ask hard questions, but we come to the meeting prepared because we've done our homework ahead of time. And if we have, our job is not a kacha or a, or a gotcha on the super, on this, on superintendency. I think our job is, if we have something we're super uncomfortable with, then we talk to the superintendent ahead of time and say, here's what I'm uncomfortable with, and give her the opportunity to find an answer or figure that out, or, you know, because she's, she does give us ample opportunity, if we've done our homework, to read what's been posted. We have a check-in phone call with her before the meeting. We have, you know, we, we have lots of time to to say, this is what's on my mind, because we're not there to embarrass anyone. We want to clear up anything, any big questions we have, so they have time to gather that information for us. So while we still come, I think our Thursday night meeting is a great example. I, I came with an open mind about what I would decide. I didn't really know for sure how I would vote until very close to the time to take the vote because I was listening and learning and thinking about, okay, what, what had I understood before? What was I hearing actually presented? How did I feel about this going forward based on what I learned and what I felt from the community, and certainly input from people that we heard from during the day? But I just think it's, I just think we, we do our homework, and that keeps us all from being surprised or caught off guard, or, because it's, our board meetings aren't a time for us to, to, there, there are time for us to discuss and learn, but, but we, we all have...
there, there are time for us to discuss and learn, but, but we, we all have the opportunity ahead of time to become prepared and to ask those kind of questions.
I, I think the problem though with the last meeting was that we didn't have enough time. And I know that myself, that I was, I was doing research all day on Tuesday. And there were things that I was finding out right up to the last minute. And I know that there are members of the board that do not have the luxury of time, like a retired person does. And, and frankly, I was just, I, I, I was, I was shocked when I was finding things, but I didn't have enough time. I didn't even have enough time to read all the emails that we got. It was, it was, it was a quick turnaround. We usually have the Tuesday meeting. We've got the entire weekend. We've got Monday to ask the questions. We didn't have that luxury. And so as a result, board members, I, I was asking lots of questions. I was, I was, I was trying to get information. And when I couldn't get the information, it confirmed then the research that I had done. And then it was like, oh, no. And, and, and so I think when we say support, not surprise, it's got to be on both. And, and, and I think Thursday's meeting was a, was a really great example of how we, we were caught off guard on both sides. And so I don't think it was a, it was a matter of, of not coming, wanting to learn information or, or, or having totally made up minds, but I frankly didn't have enough time to, to warn the superintendent, to be honest with you. And I, if I had, if I'd had an extra day, wouldn't have been a problem.
And I think that, and I think the other part, I totally agree with you, Marcy, was the framing. Like, one of the things that I regret when it got to the framing of it, when it kind of said whether we should be doing this in this meeting or not. Like you said, Jenny, some people's like, yeah, this is what you, and I'm like, no, this is not what should be happening. So I, I remember the statements like, this is exactly with what the board meeting is for. And then I was like, no, that's not proper framing. This should be a study session, because like, exactly like Marcy said, I was like, okay. So when Andy talked to me about it, I was kind of card off guard. I didn't know like where to go. But what, what I was thinking, and I was like, okay, where's the information on it? I didn't have a fact sheet that gave me exactly what I'm talking about. Here's the pros, here's the con. This is what you may hear about it. This is, you know, so you can be aware. So now I have limited information and then I'm bombarded with a whole bunch of information. And hence I'm like, okay, well, what do I do? So hence I felt very much backed into a corner when it comes to even feeling like a decision had already been made. Because I'm seeing on some document that's signed, I'm seeing people saying, yes, this is a choice that I will be making. And I'm like, wait a minute, is this the decision done and over? I understand we're voting on it, but is this something that's, the superintendent said, yes, we should be doing this? And I think that's where it comes to me that, yes, we should come with an open mind. But the how, it's easier to keep an open mind is when we are presented with the information. And the show shows you what you may expect regarding the topic.
And I think all of this kind of weaves together, right? In this, everybody's got to provide the information that you need to make a decision. Both the superintendent to the board and the board to the superintendent. So it sounds like you got this first kind of, oh, my gosh, we didn't have enough time. There wasn't enough information. I didn't have time to ask questions out of the way. So now you know.
A good learning experience.
Yeah, yeah, the learning experience is good. So.
Julie, can I pop in here just for a minute? I really agree with what everyone has said. I agree with what Kiana and Marcy and what Jenny said, and I appreciate the comments. Things, and I think I, I really saw that in the meeting that that was happening. And we could see as the meeting was moving on that we were getting in a place where there wasn't enough time and there wasn't enough information and there was too much controversy over it. We were looking to that. I think Dr. Forless was getting that message too. So we did the right thing. We did the right thing. But I, I also want to say that we want to be careful in a situation like that to, to project to our families, our teachers, our constituents that we still support each other. We support our, our board members and we support our superintendent. We can express some of those things that we didn't get enough information or those things, because that's reasonable. And that's giving feedback to the Dr. Forless, but we have to be careful of being so strong that we undermine what Dr. Forless or what a board member is trying to accomplish. And we got a little bit south on that, I think. And I just think is so important, we have to work together, especially in right now, when tension is high. And even among board members is high, because we're grappling with a lot of emails and strong opinions and being told what we say is bad or what we say is good. Or I've, I've received some pretty crazy emails where people have said really didn't, you know, hard things to read. And so we're a little bit tense. So we need to hang together and, and not let that escalate and support each other. But again, I, I agree. I think we all learned a lot from that. And I hope that lesson helps us to not have to go down that path again. And maybe we will to some degree, just because there's always lessons to be learned. But, but I appreciate all of you for, for really jumping in here and getting your perspective. And I don't know, Mr. Peterson, if you have any ideas, I, I don't, I know you're, you hang back and you sometimes don't get to jump in like you'd like to. Is there anything you'd like to add to this?
Yeah, this is like trying to jump into a, I'm not sure. But anyway, probably the only thing I would add, not so much about the board meeting that happened last week, but more from the standpoint of just things in general, probably under bullet number two. Is that when we're asking questions of the superintendency or of the staff, ask ourselves first the question, you know, is this question I'm asking pertinent to my responsibilities? Or is this starting to branch into operational and running the district? And if it's, if it's starting to branch, how I think the district should be run, then I think we have to phrase the question differently. You might be able to ask it from the standpoint of, for your information. But, but if we can focus and kind, and try and keep our efforts and focus on policy, on budgets. And in those areas then that we're responsible for and be careful that we don't get into too many depth of questions that really get into operational that are beyond our scope of responsibility and then just become a destruction. So that's my only other suggestion that we be careful with. I'm not pointing to anyone in particular, but just a reminder to us.
Thank you. And, you know, we're, you're doing what a good team and a, or a good family does. You're talking about things that happened that there were issues around and you're sharing your honest feelings and feedback. And I think that's a really great characteristic of an effective school board. So kudos to you for being willing to talk about it and, and learn from it. I think that's a great lesson for everyone. So how about we move on? Okay. So one of the things that we talked about perhaps needing to review in the future was board agenda agreements. So this is about your current board items. Let's just assume you have a meeting tomorrow, which you do, right? Is it tomorrow? Okay. This is just so that you have definitive guidelines set up for how that agenda is going to be developed and formulated. And whether you're going to have consent agenda and some other things. So I don't know what your current practice is, but the board president will meet with the superintendent how many days in advance of the meeting to review and approve the draft agenda. So is that typically five days?
Six.
Six, okay.
Because we meet on Wednesday and it's the board president and the clerk.
Okay. Both, okay.
Which, by the way, I've really been very glad we do that. For one reason, I wouldn't want all the pressure on me if it, we weren't planning and everybody looked at me and said, why didn't you think of that or whatever? But also it's been really great for Marcy. This is her second, third year on the board. It feels, it's gone so fast, although this year seems longer than ever. But it's been really great to be in there with Marcy for multiple reasons, getting to know her, but also her getting to know the process. So it's been, it's, I thought it's, I think it's worked out really great.
Me too.
Good. Okay, you, I'm assuming you use a consent agenda in a district your size. So it will be used. So pulling items from consent, does, does that happen? And if it does, do you have a process for it? So talk me through that a little bit and what that looks like.
Well, that's a good question, because we've struggled with that. So this is a good time for review. When there is a consent agenda item and we get to the consent agenda, we can ask. When the, first of all, I, I say, is, I believe it's, is there a motion? Is there a second, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? And I'm trying to think, do we do that first? And then we do a motion? I think we do that first. We say, is there any, okay, thank you. Is there anything you'd like to pull? I have to walk like I'm in the meeting, because I.
Close your eyes.
I say, is there anything anyone would like to pull? If not, we then make a motion, that's right, because then you make a motion if there's something to pull. You, you say that it's, you change your motion, then it would be all of the items in the consent agenda. And then, then after we vote on the ones that were not pulled, we go back and vote on the one that was. And we have a discussion or whatever we.
Okay.
So chooses.
Great. Now, do you have a requirement that if a board member intends to pull something, they need to notify the superintendent a certain amount of time ahead of time so that the superintendent can have the information that the board member needs to make the decision? So let's say you're pulling an item, I don't know, a contract you're going to approve. And the board member just wants more information about what's in the job that, that you're approving the contract for, or whatever. So you don't want to pull something, this is, goes back to that support, not surprises. You don't want to pull something that night and the superintendent be kind of like, okay. So now I don't have everything I need to maybe answer the question. So if you're going to do that, do you have a timeframe in which you notify the superintendent?
Julie, I do have a, that, that's a perfect question, because that goes into something that I feel like we've struggled with when it comes to not the actual creation of the agenda, but when the details of the agenda is posted, like the, the meeting is held that actually frames the agenda. But I think we've had things detailed out regarding those things under the agenda as late as Monday. So if it's Monday night and I'm just getting to it, Tuesday's the meeting. And I am like trying to get to it, kind of take it all in, write my notes. And my meetings, like even if I'm having that midday meeting right before the agenda, still may not have it all processed or get some information. And that's, I think, when it's too close to the actual meeting, that again is difficult. Exact examples, contracts, if we don't know who we're hiring, what's happening, why are we hiring? Because it's kind of when it comes to personnel and people, I think that's a great example. It seems like we just kind of approve it in the dark. It doesn't really, you know, matter who, what, exactly what's going on, because it, again, it may not be added till the night before.
So it sounds like that's more of a, just getting the information front loaded earlier. So that the board has a longer time to look at the supporting materials. So do you have a timeframe? So your meetings are on Tuesday? When does the board agenda get posted? Is all the backup material there, you know, those kinds of things?
Monday at four o'clock.
Friday at four.
Friday at four, okay.
Monday at four. And then Monday at four, for personnel items.
Okay, Monday at four for personnel.
Okay, only, only the addendum. The person request, the bulk of them are, are loaded on Friday. And then the addendum goes in Mon- Monday afternoon just before.
And that is, that is a common HR practice for lots of reasons. We can get into it later time. We want to talk more about that. Let's make sure that Dr. Driscoll could weigh in on many of the reasons why personnel addendum is posted 24 hours in advance. But otherwise it's posted Friday. Without a couple of little materials.
Okay.
Would you like, would you like questions on the agenda? Isn't it Monday morning? You would prefer that so that your staff has, has a good time to be able to vet questions. So it's, at what time, if, what, what, what would be the deadline? Would it be noon on Monday that you would, or 10 o'clock on Monday that you would like the questions?
Monday at noon would be most reasonable and that that gives staff, you know, 24 hours to conduct the research. Assemble, gather the information, oftentimes follow up with a board member about a specific question.
So Marcy, you're, I mean, you're really doing my job here. That was one of my questions. Yeah. It seems like if you're going to pull something from consent. If, unless it's HR related, because not all of that information is uploaded yet. You really should let Dr. Forless know noon on Monday. If you're going to pull something that is not HR related. So the good news is everything else is loaded before Monday. So hopefully, you know, Monday at four, then you do have an opportunity to go back and look and see. I would say that most HR decisions are really the purview of the superintendent and the people who have done the interviews. And I don't know in what circumstance, maybe you would pull that off of the consent agenda without getting too in the weeds with that. I'm sure there are, I'm sure there are times that you would may want to do that. But I think you should be careful about pulling those items. You know, because what we know is that you are in charge of only the superintendent in terms of HR in the district. So that's just something to think about. So.
Well, right, we, Julie, we have never pulled anything when it comes to the actual hiring of a specific person. But, or a specific group of individuals. But saying, but one of the things that we've talked about and that I would like going forward. Like for instance, principals and all, like we know, and we know pretty much kind of what the public knows, right? I think it's, to me, it's just a courtesy that, you know, be, be ahead of time or somewhere in that process. I mean, you have other districts that actually are a part of the process. And, you know, I understand that's a unique situation and I'm not asking to be in the weeds. I think just learning at the time when everybody else learns and then sign your name off like, yay, welcome, whomever you are. I think is something I would like the process to be different.
Okay, so it sounds like, Jenny, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, first of all, personnel isn't ever part of the consent agenda.
Right.
It's, it's separate is, and I, I just wanted to go back for a second, because basically if we're letting Andy know our questions by noon on Monday, and she's getting back to us, then we're not really saying we want to pull something from consent until Tuesday afternoon. Because we haven't given her a chance to respond back to our questions. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not sure when the, we, I don't think we really nailed down when we would say, I'm going to want to have a discussion about this during the meeting and pull it off of consent. I don't know, I don't think we've nailed down that timeframe before we go into personnel any further.
I agree.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that you're going to notify the superintendent of the intention to pull something from consent by Monday at noon.
That's, that's not what we said. We said we would, if, sometimes we just have, what we've done, I guess, is maybe we've had questions about consent, like explain to me what this is, or it doesn't mean we're not willing to keep it on consent. It just means we have further questions. And that's what we're giving her by noon on Monday.
Okay.
So we haven't, so then she has like 24 hours to respond to us. So say then noon on Tuesday, she says, I have the answer for you. And so it's more like, I just don't think we have that timeframe. I don't know, I don't know.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that we can nail it down so specifically, because there may be things that you get answers to and you're like, okay, I, I, I'm good with that. That's fine. I don't want to pull it. There may be other situations in which you get the answers and you think, this would be a really great thing for the public to know. If I didn't know it, maybe somebody else doesn't know it, and we should have a conversation about this. And we should have a conversation about this in a public meeting. And, you know, we have, in my, in PB, we've typically done all of our bond projects we've done in consent. And recently, we've been, why are we doing that? Why aren't we pulling them and thanking our voters and talking about the projects that we're doing? And the things that are going to happen and the amazing opportunities that our students will have? So, so I do think there is going to be a little bit of decision-making nuance in here between noon on Monday and noon on Tuesday. But I think what we want to talk about is, this is something that I would like to pull. If you give me some information that makes it easier for me to understand, then we can have a discussion about whether I want to actually pull it or not. Does that make sense?
Yes, very much. Thank you.
Okay.
This one thing is kind of coming down to, we'll do the best we can to move it as quickly as possible. For me, it may be Monday night before I'm able to get, get at it. So we'll do the best we can, but to try and minimize and not have surprises.
Yes, always. I think that's the message. And so then going back to Kiana's concerns about having information about hires at the same time the public does. It seems to me that perhaps between Dr. Forless and your, and your assistant superintendent of HR, whatever that person's called, you could get that information to board members before it's actually uploaded into Board Docs.
Yeah, Julie, I appreciate you saying that, that typically I will include that in status. We have had a couple where the interviews were on Monday and then they were on the, the agenda the following night. And so if it doesn't make it into status, it has come on Monday. So every best of intent is to have those included in status on Friday.
Okay, so if it's not in the status, what we're going to say is
Administrative positions, right.
Yeah, you will provide that information to the board members as soon as it's available to do. You know, there's so much negotiation, I think, also in some of those conversations that you're having with potential administrators and salary. And, you know, there's a lot of detail going into that. So, you know, if the, if the interviews are late in the week before or early in the, in the week of, you're, there's probably a real significant timing issue that your staff is up against.
On their side, yes.
Okay. Okay. So I think we've discussed all of this and I want to keep moving because we thought this was going to take 20 minutes and we're a little bit longer than 20 minutes. So we'll just keep going. So board agenda agreements. What is your process for future gen- agenda items? Do you have a signif- do you have a formal process for that? Okay.
No, we don't.
Okay, so let me tell you what we have seen in other school districts and, and what they do so that you have a sense. I think the, the one that is probably most common is board members, if they have an item that they'd like to see on an agenda, they let the superintendent and the board president know. Informally via email, I'd like to see this on a future agenda item. So I think the other thing that some of, some boards do is they have on their agenda as the last item, future agenda items. So in a public meeting, board members would request topics for future agendas. Now, there's danger in that because you can't, all you can do is tell people the topic you'd like to discuss. You can't discuss the topic you'd like to discuss. So you have to be careful about that. You can't go into why and how and who, all of those things. It would be, you know, I'd like to talk about the district's social emotional learning plan. I'd like to talk about the ELA scores for grade three, whatever it is. But you, you, when you have that agenda item, you have to be careful that you don't violate open meeting law at the same time that you're adding that agenda item. So those are a couple of ways that people do it. And, you know, there are situations where it gets a little contentious. Some board members want something that no one else wants and there's that piece. I don't think that's going to happen to you all. But there are things to consider when you're looking at future agenda items. And it's, it's your agenda and your decision. So I'm going to let you guys talk now.
Well, I think it's a, a good talking point because there have been times, I think each board member has wanted to study something. And the question that's out there is, if we all have different things we want to study and we only have so much time to study, because we could only study realistically 12 items in a year. And that's probably even more because we only have time possibly for one study item at every board meeting. So maybe, maybe there's more than that. And I guess that would be one per year, maybe 24? I, I can't imagine studying 24 different items though. So, so there's, to me, it seems like we need a process where there's, there's some agreement that that one is important enough for enough board members to make it a study session, rather than anyone of the board members wants a study session. So we got to find a way to get it on there. Or some people will get theirs on and others will not. So I think there needs to be a process for the board to decide, like today, we're having a study session. Hopefully, will we be able to narrow down a realistic amount of study sessions for the upcoming six months at least? Maybe that's the way we do it in the future. We get through those six, six months that we've agreed on certain study sessions. And then we have another study session about other topics that we'd like to study.
And remember, this is, this is not just study, study session topics, but also just regular agenda item. And
Discussion items, you're talking about discussion items.
Yep, in, in a regular meeting. And I don't know that there's, I don't know that there's magic that they happen in a study session or in a regular meeting. I think it probably has to do more with the amount of time that you think the topic's going to take. So some of the things that go into the future agenda items requests, some of them probably shift to study session because they're big topics and they warrant more time. And other ones may be, you know, we can do this in 10 minutes, 15 minutes at a regular board meeting. So
Well, and I think the difference between a study session and a discussion is kind of what happened on Thursday. That, if, if we had had what Dr. Forless was trying to do something to bring an innovative idea to the district that had a time crunch on it. So she put it in discussion, but typically that would have been a study
Study session.
Yes. And, and therefore, people from outside would not be able to talk at that moment before we had an opportunity to study it ourselves. And then we might put it in, if it even got that far, to the regular agenda where people could have input. So sometimes those conversations have to be in both places. And other times, a discussion in the board meeting, like a budget or something like that on the agenda works out. So it really is depending on the nature of the topic.
Yep. So I think what, all you have to decide today, and you don't even really have to decide anything. I mean, this is your study session, so you all do what you need to do. But I think that what I would suggest is that you figure out a way for someone to suggest a future item and then have a process to decide whether it's a study session item or a regular agenda item. So that, that, whether that's the board president, the clerk and the, and the superintendent, you know, however you decide that you're going to do that. But you have a way for people to make suggestions. And, and maybe it's just, you know, emailing the superintendent and the board president saying, this is something I'd like to see on a future agenda. Okay, and then you all put it in a list of things. And maybe that's even something you keep Andy in a running document that you then say, okay, this was requested, this is a date requested, this is who requested it. We're going to do it in a study session and this is a study session that's called for. We're going to do it at a regular meeting, this is the meeting that we'll do. Some of the requests that you make, the timing will be an issue. So, you know, some of the things will be better discussed in March than they will in September, just based on the way school calendars go. So
I'm trying to remember, when we did, when we set our policy of what the president and what the clerk were in charge of, did we include an assignment for who helped, like, manage requests from board members? I feel like that was part of the discussion at one point, but I, I'm going to blame it on COVID brain. I can't remember at all. I thought it kind of said that if you were a board member and wanted to talk about something in a meeting or discussion, we said you would bring that to the clerk.
I thought it was the clerk.
I think so.
I think it is the clerk. And then when, then she would kind of met, or he would kind of manage the, the list. And when they had their board, when you went to the board agenda meeting, the clerk would say, and you're discussing what are possible, they would say, well, here's some of the requests we had. Or, and this one just came this week and it's really timely for right now, or it came out of this situation. Or, and so that the clerk was the person kind of responsible for helping funnel that in general to the, to that, to that board meeting. And it wasn't necessarily a open meeting law violation because like if I said, hey, I'm hearing a lot of chatter about our sportsmanship that we are showing on the field or something like that. Could we have a discussion about that or a study session about that? And I would call Marcy and then Marcy would bring it up at the board agenda meeting. You know, member Richardson has heard a lot of chatter from parents about this and she'd like to find him to discuss it. And then she could get back to me, it's great, we have it on the agenda for this week or it, we don't have time this week, it'll be two weeks, you know, that they would coordinate that. I thought that's kind of in my mind, that's what it looked like.
My, my recollection would, was not quite just the clerk would be the only one receiving it, but perhaps the board president, the clerk and the superintendent. Because the superintendent also needs to put items onto the study session and discussion topics. So I think we're kind of on the same page in the sense, we'll set to those three initially, my recommendation, then to have the board clerk track them and report on them. Some of them may never, may, may never make it to a discussion because of time and everything else we have on it. But at least we'd have a place to track it, that's my recommendation.
I have a question for Dr. Forless. When you're making the decision of what's on the study session, what motivates it? Is it because of the timeframe? Because I know sometimes there's some, in the past, now we know why they're on the study session, no problem. But in the past, and we hopefully will be at that point again in the future, sometimes there are study sessions, we, we don't know why that was chosen, but that was chosen. And I feel, and I don't know how the other board members feel, but sometimes I feel we don't have any too much input into those study sessions. We just come and that's presented to us. And I feel there needs to be more collaboration between the superintendent and the board on what study sessions are coming up. At least so they are aware that that's something you're, you're looking into presenting as a study session. This is something we're talking about, we're considering this as a study session. What do board members think about doing it? And here's why we would think this would be a good idea, having that conversation.
Yes, so President Meyer, it's typically what we have experienced in the last year or so is it's been very timely. So something that is coming up that we need to make a decision about, or we need to be aware of something that is happening. So, so it goes both ways to be able to say, you're interested in learning about something. We could put that on the agenda and at the same time, we know we're managing a calendar. Martha is going back, she and Miguel have gone back and they've looked at a couple of years of board agendas to look at where the recurring pieces of information. So for example, we know when we have to talk about budget, we know when we have to have a hearing about budget. We know that during budget season, that's going to be a whole lot more of study session so you can dig in and really pay attention. So we want to plan that out so that we know where we have time and where we could add some of those items to. But it's typically driven by, there's something timely that we have to make a decision by. That's typically the driver. And it could be the community is the driver, they're very interested in something. Or it's a deadline that we have to meet. So for example, coming up tomorrow night, we're going to be talking about pay for performance. And so that's timely so that we can get that out to our staff so they can start the new year with thinking about what their plans are for pay for performance. So that is specific around time. We want to make sure people have it in ample time to understand it and put it into their systems.
So it seems like that's a good way to build that so that then you know where you have openings and where you can put other
Yes.
requests in.
Yep, we don't want to over, over promise time when we know there's some things that'll just never make it during budgets, for example.
Yes.
I also, I think that if we look at our portrait of a graduate, that might be a good place to do it. Because when I looked at topics that I knew, I was interested in for future, but for future study sessions and, you know, probably some of our other board members seen where it aligned with our portrait of the graduate and what the pillars are. Like we have a equity pillar, like for instance, it's some things I talked about there. We have, you know, things where we look at our collaborative nature and what we're doing. So I think that might be a good thing to do also. Look at a portrait of a graduate and how it frames what we do, with that being our bench
Great idea.
what we're doing.
So I hear the portrait of the graduate and the five strategic goals. So that would be a way to be able to say, if it aligns, this is something that we should dedicate time to. If it doesn't align, maybe that's not as high of a priorities, but I hear, a good idea.
Okay, so it sounds like what we're going to do is board members are going to notify the board president, the clerk and the superintendent about future agenda item requests. The clerk will be the person working with the superintendent and the board secretary to schedule those and tracking them. Obviously, the clerk is going to need the assistance of Martha probably to get that document together and, and have her help, you know, kind of inputting and tracking it. Does that sound like a plan for everybody? We got a thumbs up on that? All right, good. We're going to keep going. The board preparation meeting agreements. So this is the board will call who with questions and when. So I think we already talked about this, so that's good because Marcy brought it up. So you're going to call the superintendent or you're going to email the superintendent by noon on Monday if you have questions about a current agenda item. The other agreements in here are board members will come prepared to discuss items. They'll notify the superintendent about positive and negative comments received from the community on specific agenda items. Although my guess is she already gets the negative ones, it's the positive ones that you might have to provide. And you'll give the superintendent time to research clarifying questions.
May I ask, is, take advantage of this time to ask Dr. Forless, do you feel, I know, do you realize it's only been less than a month? You've been our superintendent, so this may be a premature question. But do you feel that the communication from the board, we're talking about what we want from you a lot, but do you feel like the communication from the board to you has been enough and broad enough or substantial enough that you feel well-informed? And then, or do you feel like you wish you had more? Give us your feedback.
So, okay, so today's the 27th, so in my 26 days, I, I really like that we are living up to what our, our commitments are to one another with our check-in time and making sure that we're using that, that is very, very beneficial to me. Feedback is my friend. I think that's what makes organizations better, it makes me better as a leader. So I appreciate the feedback. I, I'm hopeful that the status reports are being read and understood. And if they're not, that's an opportunity for me to check in and ask about that. So I think we're doing okay. I think we could get better in some places, but we'll, we'll, we'll keep moving forward. That I think reaffirming what our system is, is around status reports on Friday, check-ins and making sure that we're using that time really well. We'll continue.
And we take full advantage of those one-hour conversations every week to really express to you how we feel, what are our concerns? Because that's how you're going to learn from us, where we're coming from. We are all very different personalities and we all have different lenses. And it's so hard for superintendent to work with five different bosses. I mean, they feel like they're all my bosses. And so the more you can talk to board members, individual board members, and build a trusting relationship through those one-hour check-in every week, I think are going to be critical for you. And I encourage board members to please make those a quality hour. Critical for you. And I encourage board members to please make those a quality hour. And I know.
It's I think it's just thirty.
I think it's only thirty minutes. That's a problem. I think we need an hour.
I thought it was an hour. I think it's going over every time.
Yeah, we're not. I that that was what I was gonna say that I I feel like I really value those check ins and I don't think they're long enough. So. With everybody's busy schedules. I think we need to do an hour. Martha, we need to do an hour. Um, I know that we were ambitious thinking we could get through those in thirty minutes. I think they require an hour. So I would just like more time.
It could be in two years. Thirty minutes is enough, but this the newness of your relationships are. Going to take some time.
Or do, yeah.
And the world we're living in.
Yes. There's that.
If it only takes, and then if it only takes thirty minutes, great, but let's make sure that we. Um, identify an hour. I think that would be very, very beneficial for me.
Can't wait for the day where I say I got nothing. I don't even need to talk to you.
That that day will be December thirty first for me.
I was gonna say Jenny, is that ever gonna come? Because I'm ten years in and I don't think that's happened yet.
I just think Elaine is rude when she says stuff like it's gonna come in December for her.
Oh, there you go.
So our action from that is we'll extend our time to an hour. It's just thirty minutes. Doesn't feel like nearly enough. That would be the request. There's more time.
So that's a one hour check in every week or just before board meetings?
Every week.
Okay. Okay, very good. Um. So I'm gonna keep moving so we can keep moving. Um, during the meeting agreements, the board president will ensure only one person speaks at a time and each member has an equal opportunity to participate. Board members will model the behaviors expected of students um and community members, staff. Procedures for public comment are clear um and available at the meeting site. Only the board president will respond to public comment. Um, in two other in two ways, um, or perhaps three. Um, the board president may recognize the superintendent for factual information or follow up, request follow up. Um, to public comment. And then the board president may. Recognize a member to respond to a personal attack on the member. Um, so. That's something that I doubt happens very often, but um it it is permissible by law. I I don't know if it's advisable. Yeah, I don't know if it's advisable, but I think it's it's permissible. Um, so that's just something. Um, and I I've seen that happen only once and I wasn't on the board at that time, but a a community member got up and was just. So rude and making very disparaging comments about about a board member's wife. And and he responded to that. As I think you would um if that's gonna happen, so. Um, the superintendent will provide clarifying information. Issues, not people, will be discussed during the meeting. Uh, members listen respectfully to one another and staff. And remember that whole side conversation or the cell phone. Um. Remember your cell phone in an open meeting is actually part of open meeting law. So if you're responding to items that are coming from the community during the meeting. You're violating open meeting law. Um, monitoring compliance with open meeting law. And that's not just. The job of the board president. That is the job of everyone involved in the meeting, the superintendent, the board secretary and every board member. Um. If you need to get things back on track, you can do a point of order. Um, you can ask the board president to, you can call for the vote. There's there's a number of different ways that you could do that. And then the last one is members will refrain from making long unnecessary speeches that don't move discussion forward. So every discussion that you have in a meeting, the things that you're talking about should be focused on making. Um, and providing information so that a decision can be made by the board. Everybody okay with those agreements?
I just have a question for the board. Is there anything that, and I hesitate to ask this, but I I guess I'm gonna need to. Is there anything I could do different or better to meet your needs in this? Especially in this environment where we're on WebEx. And it's hard. I know. Steven, you'll probably say, let me talk more often. But is there anything that I can do better to make your experience in these board meetings? More protective or more fair or whatever that happens to be, because I'm. I I will not take offense. Just tell me unless you call me stupid or something other than that, I will. You can just tell me what I need to do.
President Minor, I appreciate your asking, and I think the thing that would make things easier for me. Is there in order to kind of stop or frame things to the public? Um, you say, well, what basically when somebody wants to be heard, you may say to them, I hear that you're saying this. But I feel sometimes that in doing that reframing. I do take offense to um having paraphrase. What I'm saying, because I feel like I know that I'm speaking English. So when there's a paraphrasing of what I say. That's what brings us down that road. What's going wrong? You know, and then it becomes like disparaging rather than just, okay. You know, I understand you have strong feelings about that. When it goes past, I understand you have strong feelings about that and says. This is a reframing that I take offense to that.
Okay, I certainly don't want that. So if I'm not sure I understand you and I want to make sure. That I'm clear on your message. How would you like me to do that there? I just want to make sure, and that may not even be what you're referring to. But is is that something that you have a problem with if I? And making sure I understand what you're saying or or your question? Would you prefer me to not do that? I'm I want to make sure I understand.
So can I just jump in here with the suggestion? I think. It seems to me that maybe it might be good to say, so what I'm understand you say is XYZ, not. What I hear you saying is XYZ. So that it doesn't sound like you're trying to take what Kiana has said and make it something it isn't. But you're just trying to understand. The the main point or the the number of points that she wants to make. Does that sound? Okay, Kiana?
Yeah, I think it's closer to what I'm saying. It's like. Well, saying a board member serious is saying, it's like I'm saying what I said. So that it's so it's reframing what I'm saying. So yeah, what Julie is saying definitely is closer to what the issue is.
Okay. Anything else?
I think whatever we can do to focus on on item number nine to. You refrain from long. Unnecessary speeches if if you don't, if we can get away from that and shift more towards. Decisions that can move the discussion along. If we've got a three or four or five hour meeting going on and parents are trying to listen in, you know, we lose them after a few hours. So whatever we can do to be succinct and concise and move forward quickly with. With making the decision, I think would be good for us as well as the community.
I I would agree and 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 at times um. Um, that uh. Madam President, I think you you feel like you have to summarize what's going on and 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 it's almost seems like you're speaking for the board. And if I remember my training, no one should feel that they're speaking for the board. Um, because I think sometimes you go a little bit too far and. We've got a feeling that, okay, this is what the board thinks, but you've never asked me. And so I want you to, I want you to be careful that when you're summarizing. You're you're not indicating that there's agreement for from the board. And I'm not even sure you really need to summarize. I think. I what I'm hearing um member Peterson say is that. Let's say stuff that moves this the the in the discussion forward and. If we all thought like that, I think we could, we could make this. Meeting. Sleeker. More um. Public friendly so that they understand and that so that we don't get in the weeds. I think sometimes we're getting in the weeds and. As a result, with particularly WebEx, it's really hard to concentrate. And and maybe we just stick to short and succinct. Um. Statements that push the conversation forward. And I and so I'd like to agree. With what um board member Peterson said that maybe we all ought to um take a look at number nine.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. I will. Catch myself doing that and not do that anymore and remind me after meetings, if you if you have a specific instance, because sometimes I don't realize. I think I don't realize I'm doing, excuse me, doing.
You said very eloquently, Elaine.
Yes. What? Repeat that again? What?
I see. You said very eloquently when you do re uh summarize, etc., but I think sometimes we could just shorten it and move on.
Okay, got you guys. Thank you. I'm glad I asked. Well, okay.
Yes, thanks, Elaine. Um, and that's brave of you to ask that. So kudos to you. That's a. Um, I don't think my board president's ever asked me that. Sometimes. Yeah.
It's really hard. It is really hard to. To balance between keeping the meeting going and. And talking too much and having control over the meeting as I I'm supposed to. Have somewhat of a control over the meeting and not doing that, but I will, I'll keep trying and I. I appreciate the feedback. Otherwise, I would not have known. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think the other thing is, you know, when we're when we are doing these WebEx meetings. I think we tend to talk more because we don't have a lot of visual feedback. So we just kind of go on and on and on because we can't see. The people in the audience. We can't see other, you know, the only people we can see are the are the board members. So. Um, so I think that's something to just think about, too. And it's not an unusual phenomenon in this situation that we're in right now. With.
One more thing really quick. I remember Helen Hollins at the beginning of WebEx explained to me that because it is um. Just on on this monitor, that I'm going to have to say things more like. We had to go into the votes the way we do, which is people don't, there's a lot that they're missing that we make an assumption that they know and that. That could be a part of it, too. I need to to decide what's important that I need to say. And compared to what I need to stop saying. So I need to make sure about.
Yeah, and I know, you know, we it for my board meetings, the board president during the virtual meetings has said. On, you know, Monday. July twenty seventh at six twenty four AM, the board voted unanimously to blah, blah, blah. We wouldn't normally do that in a meeting. But it is for the benefit of the. Sometimes thousands of people who are listening to your board meeting. So that they understand the conversation that just happened and the what the motion was and what you approved. So. There is some of that I think that has to happen um a little bit more specifically when you're on this platform, when you're on these platforms. Okay, I'm going to keep on moving. Um, so after the meeting. Um, board members and staff will support or stay silent, not undermine the decision of the board. Um, board members and staff will abide by the confidentiality laws of executive session. And as you know. Um, this total confidentiality, there is no spousal privilege or or any other privilege as it relates to executive session. And the superintendent will ensure that all the documents, records, reports, everything that needs to be um processed and maintained. In accordance with law is done so. So does that sound okay? Um, you know, there are often questions about number one. Because if you voted against something. Um. It's perfectly acceptable if people ask you, why did you vote against that? For you to explain that vote. And then add, this is the, this was the will of the majority of the board, the decision that was made. It's not the decision I wanted made. But I'm going to support what it is the board decided. Uh, because we only have one voice um and a quorum of people, a majority of people voted for this item. Um, what we're talking about is not like being outside with, you know, picketing or talking to news reporters or any of those kinds of things. So. It doesn't mean you can't explain your vote to people if they ask. It just means you're not out there publicly. Bashing the decision that the board made. Because you are on the board, so. Okay, everybody okay with those? Okay, good. Um. Board and community communication. So um, this is one of those things that is. I think one of the most difficult things to navigate as a board member. Is how you interact with community members' parents. Um. One of the things that you need to recognize is that you're an ambassador of the district. Um, and I would argue that you should emphasize the positive things as much as humanly possible. Because no one else does it. The only things that are in the news are the bad things. So um, making sure that you're doing that. Um, if you attend community meetings or community events, or you're going to be at a school for an event. Notifying the superintendent's office that you're going to be there so that they can adhere to open meeting law requirements. Um, is something that's uh really important. Um, complaints received. Oh, and I realized I don't have the right policies in here because you guys aren't on our model policy. So. Whatever your chain of command policies are, and I'll change that when I. Send you the summary document. Um, but making sure that you are, the board is the last stop in a complaint process, not the first. So. This doesn't mean that you're not going to get complaints. You are. You just have to know what to do with them. And how to handle them. And not get involved in them and um. How many of you probably heard me say this was the hardest thing that I did when I was a board member? Because I am by nature a problem solver. That's what I do. That's who I am.
I don't know what's happening for you in Paradise Valley, but no one complains to us.
Uh, yeah, no complaints at all. No, not thousands of emails coming in. Um. And it's okay, again, for board members to. Circle back with superintendent if you if you talked with that about something with them. You know, and say, has this been addressed? You know, how I don't necessarily need to know the resolution, but I just want to make sure that. This person that I know I'm going to see in two weeks at church or, you know, at yoga. I I have something to say to them. Um, so. Okay, everybody good with those? Okay. We're gonna go to superintendent evaluation.
We also don't go to yoga or church in Mesa, so.
You go nowhere, right? Um, my superintendent, uh. Jim Lee, when he was our superintendent, he used to say to the board, to us all the time. You guys spend a lot of time in the grocery store because that was our euphemism for like we, you know, someone called us and told us that a problem. And we would say to him, you know, I was in the grocery store and he'd be like, you guys spend a lot of time in the grocery store.
Kiana, that's a Kiana.
It's definitely true, though, isn't it, Kiana? Yep. Um.
Yeah, especially bashes.
There you go. Um, all right. So the other thing that we sometimes talk about is site visit agreements. Is that something that you have um? Some parameters around? In terms of if you want to go visit a school, what you do to. To get that visit organized or arranged? No, okay.
Wow, let's pull the cobwebs off of that one, huh? Because we haven't had to talk about that for a while.
Exactly.
Well, we used to, we used to kind of just arrange our own with the, but we would kind of. Um. Keep a running list of where people had been. And I I did like that because it was easy for me to say. Oh, they've had three visits from board members in the last three months. Let's pick a school where nobody's been. Or. And and so I did kind of like a running total of just. Where you visited. It doesn't, I don't even need to know the day or the. Uh, the hard part is sometimes our visits are at the request of a principal or somebody off the record. But you're on the record visit. Um, should be. I I like seeing just so that I can help spread our visits out among the all the schools in our district. I hate for some to get no visits, although they're happy probably to get no visits from super from. Board members. Um, some of them feel really happy to have us come and. And I want to make sure they all get it.
So it seems like maybe this is a conversation that you um. Need to funnel if you're going, if you, especially if you want to track everything. That you probably really need to funnel that through the superintendent's office to let them know where you are and what you're doing. So that someone can keep track of all of that. Because there's no way for each of you to know what the other one's doing.
Can we just at maybe just at the end of the week, we.
Can we just, maybe just at the end of the week, or the end of, or before a board member, or maybe at board meeting, we give Martha a little list of where we've been since the last board meeting, and then she just keeps a, I don't even care if it's, I don't even care if it's a tally mark next to the school name, like, they were there, they were there, you know, and it doesn't even have to be our names, just, they got visited, they got visited, they got visited.
Well, and I think it depends on what Dr. Forliss's preferences are. I know in Paradise Valley, we, the arrangement for us to visit a school was through the superintendent's office. So I wasn't calling principals directly. My first year on the board, I visited every site in the first calendar year, which took a lot of time. Dr. Lee wanted me to go through the board secretary, so she made all of those appointments for me. Number one, so that he knew where everyone was, and that everyone wasn't at the same school on the same day, open meeting law. And number two, so if there was pushback from a principal, which there was, he could say, this is happening, and you need to give this board member 30 minutes and take them on a, 15 minutes, or whatever it was, take them on a tour of your school. So I think, Dr. Forliss, do you have some thoughts around that?
You know, I think that it's important to make sure, I appreciate what Board Member Richardson is saying, is make sure that we're not spending too much time all at one school, and then there's all these others that don't feel like they have an opportunity to tell their story, and to share their great work and their great successes. So that makes sense to me. The other that I get very, the part that I would like to protect is just principals' time, because typically if a board member walks in the door, they drop everything that they're doing for that day. And so I feel like it's more important that they, that administrators have ample notice of when a board member is coming. I just think that that's a genuine professional respect, just to honor people's time. So I think it would work well if the communication is, to our principals, is, board members will be reaching out to you, of course, and they're welcome on your campus, please feel free to, you know, allow 30 minutes. We would never expect, I don't think anybody wants to take half of their day to, you know, spend all of their time, because principals have such an amazing responsibility to their students, that they need to be available for them.
Okay, so it sounds like you just want them to go through, you let them know where they're going to go, it's okay to directly communicate with the principal to set up the time and the date.
Oh, absolutely, they could schedule that time, go through Martha, Martha will keep a spreadsheet to Jenny's point around, just making sure that we're spreading the wealth of our time and love and support to them.
Okay.
Can we do like a monthly update? Because like, Martha, check it, but can we do, say, you know, either one of our board member meetings before it, then we can do the, you know, update? All right, because I remember we did like this heat map, like last year, with all the different ones, so I think that would be helpful, if we did something like that.
And I can include that in my status, if you would like, once a month.
Yeah. Other members, I'm just thinking it's a good thing.
I saw some heads nodding, so I think it was one they liked.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Okay, so now let's really dive into the superintendent evaluation. So my question for you is, how much time do we have scheduled? Are we already past the time that we had scheduled? I think we are.
Well, we had scheduled five to seven.
Okay, good. Well, I'm good to, I'm good to keep on going for 25 minutes, I just want to make sure that you all are good. Do we need a two-minute break, or should we just plow through?
I do, if I could just do two minutes.
Two minutes?
Two minutes, I promise.
It is 6:35 on my computer, we'll see you back here at 6:37.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know if everyone else is.
I'm back, too, but I don't think everybody is.
Okay, that was, that was quick.
It was.
I don't know if everyone else is.
I'm back, too, but I don't think everybody is.
Okay, that was, that was quick.
It was.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know if everyone else is.
I'm back, too, but I don't think everybody is.
Okay, that was, that was quick.
It was.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know if everyone else is.
I'm back, too, but I don't think everybody is.
Okay, that was, that was quick.
It was.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know if everyone else is.
I'm back, too, but I don't think everybody is.
Okay, that was, that was quick.
It was.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know if everyone else is.
I'm back, too, but I don't think everybody is.
Okay, that was, that was quick.
It was.
Okay, I'm back. I don't know if everyone else is.
Okay, so let's talk about superintendent evaluation, and I'm going to kind of run through this quickly. Obviously, the question is, why evaluate? And one of the best answers is, is because it's required by law. You have to do it. So, that's the thing. But besides the law, why are we thinking about doing it? Accountability, an opportunity to strengthen the leadership and the board superintendent relationship, a structured way for the board to provide feedback to the superintendent, and you need it for salary and benefit and contract consideration. So the idea of a formal process, I think, is important. It's not one that lots of boards are great at doing. So I'm just going to lay that out there right from the start. You know, often, I think superintendent evaluations are, you're just in executive session, and you kind of chit-chat, and everybody high-fives one another, and you walk out. That is, I don't think, an effective way to provide feedback to the superintendent. It's not an effective way to provide feedback to anybody. So I wanted to just do that. You know, one of the things that occurs to me every year, when we're doing the superintendent evaluation, is that I have never been trained to do a performance evaluation. That was not anything that I did professionally before now, so mostly because I was young, and I wasn't in leadership roles, so I wasn't, I wasn't doing those things. It's a time for the board to provide feedback. I love, Andy, when you mentioned feedback earlier, this, feedback is a gift, and it's, I quoted Pete Lor, well, Pete Lor is a childhood friend of my husband's, who, years and years ago, we were talking about doing performance evaluations, because both he and my husband do them, and he said, I don't understand why people get so upset, feedback is a gift. And so for our entire child's, children's childhood, we have talked about how teacher feedback is a gift, coach feedback is a gift, parent feedback is a gift. So whenever my kids talk about these things now as adults, they're like, I know, I know, feedback is a gift. So, but it is. So I think that's something to really think about. That two-way conversation that happens in a really good performance evaluation is what you're striving for in these scenarios. At the end of it, though, the board has to come to consensus as one, because we remember that boards, superintendents have one boss. It is the board as a whole. Now, it is a five-headed boss, with lots of different personalities, but it is just And, you know, the opportunities for improvement should not be ultimatums, unless, of course, they are an ultimatum, and that happens sometimes, too. And I think it's our responsibility to provide an honest, timely, and useful evaluation for superintendents. The one thing that we've talked about before in ASBA trainings is the halo and horn effect. So when it's, let's say you do your evaluation in June, and May was not a great month, right? There were lots of problems, and all of a sudden, the superintendent has horns, they do nothing right, there's nothing good, you know, it's really about looking at that continuum over a period of time, the year that you were doing it, or they've just done everything that you love, so they have a halo over their head. So try not to get caught in that trap when you're in the evaluation. So I wanted to leave this time for you all to have some conversation around the evaluation that Dr. Forliss put together, and I'm going to, Elaine, I'm going to leave it to you, how you want to do that? Do you want to do it by section? Do you want to just do overall feedback, and then dig in deeper at a different time? How is it that you want to handle this situation?
Well, I'll throw it back to the governing board to ask, would you like to spend enough time on the evaluation today? Because we really need to get Dr. Forliss an evaluation tool, so we can start right away. And how many of us have had an opportunity to really look at this before this meeting? That's what I want to hear back from the board, to determine how much time we could spend the rest of the time on this, this evening, and maybe come back for the study, study session items later, since we don't need that immediately. So what is your feedback from the board? Jenny wants to spend a little bit more time on the evaluation tonight?
I just like to go through it a little, I mean, I haven't spent a ton of time going through it, but if Dr. Forliss is comfortable with this tool, then I think having one is good, and I think just helping us know what we'll be watching for helps us, as we see it, kind of mentally even make note that, oh, we've observed that, and we've observed that. And I think it's good for us to kind of go through it, and then we could put off the study session, the conversation, you know, for later. That would be my vote.
Yeah, and I like, I like, we kind of tried to develop something like this, didn't we? This looks really familiar with, as a rubric. And, and I like that it's, it's the five standards, and then we've got the rating scale. As a teacher, you know, recovering teacher, I really like this, this rubric format, and because I think that, that there's enough specificity that it can give us, we can do a really good job taking a look at these five standards, and if they're five standards we believe in, and we believe in the gradation of effective, highly effective, effective, developing, ineffective, I think this could be a really great tool, and frankly, it gives me great comfort to know that we have something to look at, because we didn't the last time, and we fumbled out with it. And I think it's.
I'm sorry, we just dropped the lead.
I think Birdman Hutchinson was sharing her thinking.
Yes.
I think that's what we lost you, was with Mercy.
Oh, well, I just, I guess, in summary, I like having a tool, I like having the five standards, I like that we have a rating scale that is easy to understand, I like that we have a process, it's very comforting to have the process, I love that it's a model, each individual board member can, can evaluate, and then it gives us an opportunity to come together. And I'm, I'm comfortable with this type of evaluative tool. It, as I, as I think I mentioned right before we got cut off, as a teacher, I'm real comfortable with this type of evaluative tool, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
And President Minor, I would add that this is a model that we shared, Julie and I had a conversation about, if ASBA had an evaluation, she says, no, but it is a goal. And so she's been collecting.
It's in the works.
And that she's been collecting some really great examples, so she shared those with me, and this was the one from New York. We've made some very slight modifications to make it Mesa-specific, so I'm going to reach out to the New York School Board Association to make sure that they're okay with us, putting our name on this, or what we would need to do to move forward with it. So the other piece that I wanted to call attention to is in the light blue section, for each of the five standards, as Board Member Hutchinson talked about, with their five standards, and then very specific indicators of what that looks like, along with a rubric. But what we also like is in the light blue, it talks about possible data sources and documents, so that it grounds us into what would be evidence of that type of leadership style, or that type of leadership action. So to me, it completes everything, it doesn't leave much to the imagination, it keeps us all with shared knowledge, which I think is very important, you know, beginning a new relationship.
I would agree. I think, I think this tool is really solid. It's got a lot of what you need in it, and I do love those, the data sources. I also love that it has that rating for the standard that, down at the bottom, on the right, so you can give an overall standard, rating for the standard. So I think it's got, it's, I think it's a really solid tool. And based on the numerous that I've seen from across the country, I think it's, I think this is a good one.
And I, and also to bring attention on page 14, is where then I added in my annual performance goals that our governing board approved. So I like that it includes the local information, as well as the standards, and then it gives an opportunity for board members to weigh in individually and then collectively, as you continue to remind and teach us that it is the board, and so that it comes together, five individuals completing one evaluation.
And I think the other thing to think about in this is, there are going to, this is, this tool, as good as it looks right now, in a year, you may realize it needs tweaking. And that's always something that you should prepare for and review at the end of every evaluation year, so that, you know, the tool really does work for the needs that the board has.
Yes, when I look at evidence of student achievement, right, and student growth, I'm thinking, okay, that will, this will be an interesting year, you know, so that's very situational, and that's very timely to be able to say, what are our data points that we're looking at to make sure that our kids are growing up with us in a very unusual time in our history?
Right.
So it's flexible enough to respond.
So what about everybody else? Any thoughts? Do you want to go through it? Should we go through it standard by standard, or?
Just a check for me, are we, are we back on the streaming? So we're back into discussion again?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'll jump in then with my, my perspective on it, was that, I think it's got, you have the specific objectives in the annual superintendent evaluation on page 14, like Dr. Forliss pointed out, but then you've got more of the soft skills and leadership ones, then up in the other, that are more specific to, we can tweak those, then I guess as time goes by. A format like this, for our principal evaluation, it gives us a more defined process, and a tool for her to look to.
Jenny or Kiana, how do you feel about this tool?
Well, I guess one of my only concerns was, would be that, who are we going to wait them, when giving her an overall, when we're saying, does she qualify for her? who are we going to weight them when giving her an overall, when we're saying, does she qualify for her performance pay? I, I mean, I think the other, it's good, the tool has so many good things, but really we, we gave her the three goals that were most important to us. So do we want to do 50% on the three goals and 50% on the, like, what is that? How do we balance how much weight each of them carry at the end?
Well, and I think that's another conversation that needs to happen. You know, what is, what is performing, highly performing mean to Jenny and what does it mean to Marcy? It could be two totally different things. So the highly effective category could mean different things for different board members. So I think before you do this for the first time or as you're doing it for the first time, talking about what that means to each of you is going to be an important component of the evaluation process. And that might not be something that you can decide until you're actually in it. But I think, you know, the one thing that I did like about this on page 17, the final summary. So this is where you all would come to consensus around the superintendent's evaluation. So it doesn't mean that individual feedback isn't important. It just means that for the public and for those issues around pay for performance, you need to present something that is a consensus document from the whole board. So I like that that is in there because a lot of evaluations don't have that and you're kind of making it up as you go. So I think that's a, that's a really good tool. But I think Jenny also brings up a great point. What is that? You know, what are those pay for performance metrics? What is it? And, you know, frankly, it could be different. You know, for example, the student achievement data points that we needed for my superintendent's evaluation this year didn't really exist. Because there was no A Z merit. And we had a whole quarter where we weren't really doing formative and summative assessments. So you may come to a situation where that, a goal may not be applicable because you all said, we have to shift in the middle. You know, we need the superintendent focusing on X, Y, Z instead of this particular thing. So just to add a little bit more complexity to the whole situation. That's something to think about.
Well, I know this document from what I remember in looking at it is it has check-in points, especially in light of the first year for superintendent. So my, I guess my question would be, would we have an executive session for in the immediate future to determine how we look at the document, how we would gauge what would be the different values of the, the objectives here? And then have the check-in, which is, I think it's scheduled for the fall. And then we evaluate again if that is relevant, what we decide now. Because it seems right now everything is fluid with what's going on and having a new superintendent. So what would you say about that, Julie? You're on mute.
Am I? Oh, yeah, I am. Someone muted me because I was playing with my papers and I appreciate that, whoever that was. I think the timeline is something I thought we should have some conversation around, just the whole board. So we could, you could make sure that this timeline works for everybody. But I do think that you're going to have to kind of test the tool as you go to get a sense of whether it's working. And I think you can do that in executive session and that, and the more frequent check-ins you have probably this first year around it, probably the better, so that you're all on the same page. And then in, in the winter, you're going to have to start with new board members with the check-ins. So sorry about that.
Kiana, I haven't heard from you, Kiana. So any comments or on the evaluation?
I appreciate all the statements that have been made. And yeah, I concur with Board Member Richardson as well. Lot of great things and this, how do we, if we're going to look at the whole monetizing thing? Or, you know, I know we've had one time where like, okay, if you've met this threshold, then this, you get what we dispense paid for performance. I guess that part of it is where it gets, where we have to define what that means. It's like if you're almost like with any evaluation with your 80%, then that's what you get. Or do we even do percentages or just the whole thing? So, but everything else, I'm, I'm liking it. I think it's organized well.
I like it because I think it, I think it gives Dr. Forless some certainty. It, it, in very uncertain situation. I, I guess my question would be to Dr. Forless, is this, is this a tool that you can see? Where, okay, feedback is a gift. Is this a tool that you think could provide the type of feedback that could help direct your superintendency to success? To the best possible outcomes. Is this, are you, are you comfortable with this?
Absolutely. Board Member Hutchinson, after looking at all the different evaluations, this was the one that made most sense to me. And I think it matches the work that we're doing in Mesa Public Schools. This has a copyright date of 2017. Some of them were a little outdated that I had looked at. This is most relevant and current for the work that public school systems should be working towards. And specifically the work of superintendent. So I feel very comfortable with it. I think as Julie says, we'll work through this together to figure out where it might feel a little clunky to us and maybe why we need, where we might need to make a revision. And I'm committed to learning together as we get through it. And here's the best news of all. If we look at the timeline on page six, we've already done the summer. We can do the big check mark on summer. We got that stuff done. So I feel good about that. And then it's really going into the quarterly review and saying, how are things going along the way? That's really the power of feedback to me. And feedback to me is along the way. So that it's, it's formative to get to that summative assessment, which is the final evaluation. So the, well, some people, you know, will wait till the end to see how did I do on the end? I care a whole lot more about the feedback along the way because that informs a better outcome. So I think those that we're going to have to be disciplined to, to schedule those regular check-in times to get that feedback. And I think it would be great for us to practice the language that is in the evaluation that says, oh, this looks like an area that we really haven't had to spend much time on because maybe we have a well-oiled system that's already going. And so don't give us that time for good conversation as well. But yes, I think the quarterly check-ins are the things I'm looking to, looking forward to the most.
Me too. If, if this is the evaluation tool we decide we want to start with, I think that was a huge accomplishment tonight. Because it's, because this was hard. I mean, to find that right tool and to do it as quickly as we did, I think was, is pretty terrific.
It's definitely going smoothly. I thought there'd be a lot more conversation. So I'm happy to see that people are feeling good about it. The timeline, so the one thing that I think you'll have to deal with in election years, in, in the year after the election, is that, that spring by April first, because that's going to be really quick for new board members to be able to actually do this. So I think as much as possible before they take office, front-loading, as soon as you know who those people are, kind of front-loading those conversations with them, sharing the tool with them, sharing the feedback that's been given. I think that will be helpful because April is going to come quick and they're going to still be in the throes of, I don't even know what's going on, some of them. So if they're brand new, so.
And what I really like about the roles and responsibilities that have been identified for the president and the clerk. It's the clerk does the welcome and the orientation and induction of new board members. So I think it's very important that we have an evaluation tool to guide that discussion versus scrambling around trying to find one as we orient our new board members to, to Mesa Public Schools.
And sharing whatever's been done already. If you've already had a quarterly session by the time they're elected, you know, providing that feedback ahead of time so that they see, okay, this is where the board thinks the superintendent is and where they'd like to see the superintendent go, so that I'm not just April 1st looking at it for the first time.
Good point. So we'll just have to be disciplined and put that into our calendar.
Yes.
April 1st is a lot earlier in the year than we've normally done a superintendent evaluation. I think it's been more like, I see pros and cons of an April deadline. I'm just thinking about superintendence and graduation. It's nice to get it out of the way of the 90 days of May that are usually ours, as Dr. Callen used to say. But is that too soon for? I mean, because we, we could push that to the end of June and do this evaluation the end of June.
What, what that, and that's a really good question, Jenny, because we talked about it. The reason that we put that there, and that doesn't have to be the final evaluation. That is just that we wanted to make sure that was in there. Because that is the time when the contract says we need to inform the superintendent if it's not going to be renewed. And so we thought that would be a check-in point to make sure that the board doesn't get caught off guard if there's something there amiss that we don't, that we need to inform the superintendent about. So maybe I, I didn't look at that specific writing, but that was the purpose of it being in April. I think the final would be in June. But the check-in for April, and maybe it's not written that way, and maybe that's not what we, exactly what we said, Andy, but that was the intent of that April check-in.
Yeah, I think it doesn't, it doesn't say that the evaluation has to be done April 1st, but I think it could be interpreted that it would. So maybe just clarifying that a little bit, because what you're really saying here is, you know, we're going to agree on the, we're going to look at the contract. We're going to look at job responsibilities and we're going to, you know, look at the information we need, that we have everything we need to measure performance. It's not that you're actually going to do the measuring of the performance then, right?
Okay, so do we want, is it better to add a date in there? Because I guess I'm seeing now, I guess I kind of assumed, I don't consider, I consider spring to be while we're still in school. So like May, you know, by the end of May, because it, the last bullet points in here are about, we complete the bullet, we complete the evaluation, we turn it in. We have, you know, the, it's, it's shared, the copy is placed in the superintendent's file. Like that is all in there and it does say spring for that. And
So I would recommend that we take those last four bullets and we push those into summer, to June. Would that work?
Can you tell me what page you're looking at, Jenny?
It's page six.
Page six.
That's where I am. Okay, I see, I see where you are. Okay.
I'm just thinking, that's a hard time of year. I get that. I mean, and frankly, if we don't want to renew the superintendent's contract.
I mean, frankly, they, they would know in January. Yeah.
That's too late for us to start it anyway. And so I just, I just am wondering about that timeline that, like, no, we don't, we wouldn't want to, for some future board with some future superintendent, not our board and not our superintendent. But if they're just satisfied, if they wait till April to make that decision, they're going to be really at a disadvantage.
Behind the ball.
Yeah, in attracting and hiring a new one, they kind of need to make that decision in January. I don't, I don't know if we want to worry about that right here or right now, but you know, do we time our things more?
Yeah, I think in January, when we have that check-in, do we even have it for?
We haven't really listed the months that
Yeah, we have it.
We need to do that.
That would be
I should do that. Yeah.
Yeah, that was something we needed to determine with the board and what their comfort was of doing that. That we didn't want to predetermine that. Because I think January, one of the things that Andy and I discussed was January, we're just now getting in the middle of the month. We're getting brand new board members because the first board meeting in January is still a holiday. If I remember, well, maybe it's not the first, but we're just barely getting new board members in on that date. So it's be really hard to schedule a significant evaluation on that day. So that's why we kind of left that open for the board to get through a few things. And then we can pin those things down as we get more comfortable with the tool and where we are. It's hard to, anyway, let's stop there.
Yeah, I think there's something about January that seems right for like a half yearly evaluation. And you know, what we do in PV is we do the, the actual tool twice. We do a half yearly in January and then we submit a final in June. So we do a written in January and a written in June so that the superintendent has that documentation.
So if we're going to go every quarter with the final being in June, that that would be September, December, March, June. That would be, you know, quarterly.
Quarterly.
June is
Calendar year.
June is our, as our month that we're doing the final, it would mean those check-ins would look along those dates. Which I, if that's what we want to do, then I think we should have them in there.
Yep, we can add that. I've listed in here.
Well, and that, and that does make it easy, that March date of a quarterly check-in. At that check-in, if it's going terribly, that would meet by the April 1st. That's in the contract, right? That by April 1st, we would say
Yes.
In that March check-in, we could still meet that, that deadline with there.
Yes, and you're tracking this very well, Jenny, because those are the thoughts we were having in discussion. We just need to pinpoint and get what everyone feels comfortable. And by December, that would be nice because that would still be the current board that would have some feeling of what that should look like. Whereas in January, you, you'll have three board members that have been there out of five. So that would work. Those are good thoughts.
Does that timeframe work for everybody else? I'm seeing head nodding, so let's, I'll go with, it does work. So they were just going to refine that timeline a little bit and
And I just want to, a quick clarification, Julie, the four bullet points under spring to move those into the summer.
Move them into the summer.
Correct. Okay, got it.
Okay, anything else about the evaluation tool specifically?
Just refresh for me then what the next steps are on this one.
The next steps on this is when we take a look at, I'm sorry, Stephen, were you asking me or Elaine?
Anyone's fine.
Okay, I, I didn't want to speak over anybody. So the next steps are, if we've come to agreement, this is what I understand, Julie, we've come to agreement that this is the tool. We need to make some revisions to the timeline and some of the edits that we have shared here tonight. And then we are going to have to schedule some time in Sept, in September, December, March and June for those quarterly reviews. But I also think that the board needs to spend some time understanding this tool a little bit better. And having some conversation around how it works. And then I think to, Mrs. Sears and Mrs. Richardson talking about, you know, what does that calibration look like? And, you know, what do we believe? And look at the, the rubric and then make sure that there, if, if we need to have some percentages, that not everything in, what I, I think I'm here, I think I heard, was not every piece of the evaluation has the same merit. So that would be a discussion among board members. To say is one more heavily weighted than another. So that's a next step.
So my question to the board would be, would you like an executive session to discuss the rubric and before the rubric and before September? So when we talk to Dr. Forless in September, we have, and, and deliver that information to her before September, so she has an idea of what we're looking at. Now I realize September is really close, so we would have to have that executive session in Au-, early August, and that's like right away to try to pin down this more, so she has a better idea of what we're going to be talking to her about in September. Or are you more comfortable waiting to do the whole enchilada in September, telling her what that looks like and giving her feedback? Those are the questions I think we have right now.
And I'm going to add one more thing. Do you want to have a public conversation about the tool that you're going to be using in a public meeting? That's the question, you know, are, do you want to demonstrate to your community that you're looking at a specific tool that has measurable outcomes? That's, that's just something else to consider as you're doing all this.
Is it possible to, to review it together to get an understanding and then go public with it? I, 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 I just, I just, the sausage being made would, no. But when it's refined and sitting on that plate, that'd be a heck of a lot better, I think.
Well, we're, we're already flying planes just while we're constructing them. Let's not do that with this, right?
Yeah.
And yeah, I think that would be appropriate. I would, I want, I'd want you to check with your legal counsel on whether discussion, just discussing the tool could be done in executive session? I don't know. Now, if you were discussing the employee and the tool, you could do it in executive session. But can you talk about just the tool in executive session, or does that have to be a public meeting?
I, I think we would want to talk about the employee in, in reference to the evaluation. I don't know how we can separate the two.
Okay.
So I think it would be an executive session.
I would agree. Right. Yep. And then you're just noticing, Dr. Forless, that you're doing it, you know, the, the usual stuff that you have to do for executive session. Okay. So it sounds like you have an executive session to schedule. We really put a lot of work at these trainings on you guys, don't we? Sorry.
You know what? It makes us better.
It does. And I think having this kind of tool is really a great step, especially if you haven't had anything in the past. So kudos to you for taking this on.
Well, thank you to the board.
If we could get, before we have that executive session, if we had a few days at least then to have a draft of it, after, Andy, you've had a chance to go through it and whatever else, so we can then just talk about the differences or suggested changes we might have, that would speed up the process.
Great.
Great idea. Okay, anything else about this that we need to talk about right now? Okay. I'm going to keep going then. Um, this is just a list that came from a National School Boards Association publication about indicators of a good evaluation. I just thought it was, would be good to look at and have for reference. You know, the evaluation is on performance results, not personalities. You know, the superintendent has an opportunity to respond. The board gives frequent and timely feedback, which is why I think it's really great that you work those quarterly sessions into the process, because then you can do that throughout the process, throughout the year, before you get to the final evaluation. So I'm not going to read all of those, but the one thing, you know, it, sometimes it is difficult for boards to see some of the things that the superintendent is doing. So I think as much feedback as, as Dr. Forless can give the board on things that she's doing, because I think sometimes board members are like, well, you don't do this. And the superintendent's like, what? You know, what are you fucking about? Yes, I do. So-
That feels like parenting, right?
Exactly. Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's a really good point, Julie. I think there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, and I know it's a very busy behind the scenes right now, and it would be helpful to Dr. Forless if we knew what she was doing. I know she has mentioned that she's been sitting with principals, this was even before July, but it would be nice. I think that would be a good idea. So I appreciate that, Julie.
Yeah. And just maybe going back to the calendar and looking, you know, at all the meetings you've been to, all the community gathering, you know, just even giving a running list of what you've been doing every quarter, I think is, would be good in preparation for the evaluation discussion.
You know, and I think that we spent quite a bit of time on the communication segment of, of our training today, and I think all of that has huge application into this evaluation process. And so I think it was really important that we spent the time to go through that, because I think it's going to show up here in examples of what we're doing to live by our agreements.
I agree. Okay, I'm going to keep moving along. So the superintendent evaluation and a board self-evaluation are really just linked in ways that maybe aren't immediately visible to the eye, but I wanted to just give you some food for thought. Before the board completes an evaluation on the effectiveness of the superintendent, do you reflect on the board's performance? As a board, do you reflect on your performance? And does the way the board operates help or hinder the superintendent's abilities to execute their jobs? So as you know, board self-evaluation is not required by statute, but it is something that ASBA thinks is a best practice and should be done every year. So we talk almost at every training that we do with boards about board self-evaluation. And we believe we have a great tool, a free online tool for the board to utilize to do that work. And here's just two of the questions in our self-evaluation tool, and they're just two that I found off the top of my head. But the question is, to what extent does the board evaluate the superintendent's performance annually and communicate performance expectations to the community? And then the second one is, to what extent is the board-based decisions about the superintendent's contract on objective evaluation of his or her performance and achievement of agreed-upon goals? So there are ways that you can look at your own performance to see how you are doing on the superintendent's evaluation performance process. So that's something that I wanted to bring up. And I, in talking with President Minor and Dr. Forless, we decided to just kind of go over some of the, the things in the ASBA self-evaluation tool, just so you can see it and have an understanding of what it is. So I brought some of the things forward here. There's five pillars in the board, in our board self-evaluation tool, and you can see those there. What I thought was interesting was there were five standards in your superintendent's evaluation, too, which was interesting to me that that kind of meshed together without any purposeful thought. So that was good. And I want to show you a couple of, so in each standard, there's a series of benchmarks that the questions revolve around. So you can see conduct and ethics has six benchmarks. And with it, in each of those benchmarks, there's one to two, three, four, maybe five questions, just depending on each of the benchmarks. So I don't want to read through these individually, but I do want you to have this information. So when you decide what self-evaluation tool you're going to be utilizing, you know what it is that ASBA has to offer. And the second standard is vision, and there's four benchmarks there. One of the things that I think is interesting is what we just talked about. What I've noticed when boards take this self-evaluation tool is that superintendents learn very quickly that they may not be communicating everything that they need to communicate to their board, because some of the issues around structure and accountability, some of those, you know, some board members know, yeah, we're doing that all the time, and others are like, I don't even know if we do that. So this highlights kind of where those opportunities are for improvement around communication. So the third structure, the third standard is structure, and, you know, looking at a variety of different topics, five different benchmarks there, accountability, three benchmarks in that one. And it has to do with student achievement and academic progress, and then evaluating the superintendent. And advocacy. And this is not just advocacy in terms of like going and talking to your elected officials, but it's really advocacy around in the community, in the places that you live, so to speak. So it's, it's a, it's much broader than what we might think of as advocacy when we're talking about it. And then I wanted to give you a couple of examples of questions. So these are a couple of, a few questions that are in it. And you can see that the questions are, I don't know, never, some of the time, most of the time, and always. And then in the detailed report, you would get, this would be, this could be an example of what you might get, as this is an example of what one district got for these two questions under the second benchmark in vision. You know, when these, this result that you see on the screen here is, you know, that, that's a pretty good result. You, you, you do see results where there's a lot of red and a lot of black with, for never and don't know. And that, I think, is when, sometimes when the superintendent is like, what do you mean, you don't know? You know, I'm doing all these things. So that's just something to look at. And then I wanted to, I didn't know this was going to come up like this. One of the things that we talk with boards about when we do this self-evaluation is it's not just for you to look at, but like your superintendent, we want you to set goals around some of the opportunities that you see when you look at your results. So district goals are different than board goals. So boards are looking at how they hold themselves accountable to the community, and the district is, goals are how the board and the community hold the district accountable. So they're a little bit different, and not all boards understand that or know that. So we talk a lot with boards around this, and the training that we do for this is, we can go back, we do two different trainings related to the board's self-evaluation. The first one is just to go through your results, look at where your opportunities are, where your strengths are, celebrate the strengths, and look for ways to work on the opportunities. And then the second session that we do with boards is setting board goals, actually looking at where you see the opportunities and what goals you want to set for the year going forward. So that was just a little bit on board self-evaluation and how that can really inform the superintendent's evaluation as well. Any questions about that? And you don't have to use ASBA's tool in Paradise Valley. We've not used it yet, despite my repeated request to do so. But, you know, I'm only one person, right? We developed a different tool that, and it was, we developed it years ago, but it is something that we do every single year, and we look at what our performance is, what it looks like. Not as in-depth, not as focused as this, but I think there is value in showing the community that you're evaluating yourselves, too, that you're not just evaluating everybody else in the district, but that you're taking responsibility for your professionalism and performance.
I guess since this would be a good opportunity to support, if, first of all, is this what you'd like to do? And then secondly, would you like to do it before the end of the year? Do it for the next five months ahead of us? Or would you, because of, in light of many things we have on our plate, would you like to wait until the beginning of next year and do it as a training combination of self-evaluation, which may not make sense, because you have a new board? So I'm putting that out to you, if you have any comments on that.
Well, as one of the two people that will for sure be here next June, along, along with Andy, I would like to see this maybe be in June. I, again, I know that puts a lot of executive session work in the same timeframe, or, so maybe, I don't know when, but I just feel like we pushing it back until the new board has had a chance to, I would like to do a board, and I think we should maybe agree on a tool we're going to use. And again, it could be something that is onboarded with new members as they are elected. But I feel like if this is something we do in about mid-year with our board, with the new board, it's a good chance to say, are we holding ourselves accountable to what we, what we say is important to us? So I would like to do it. I just, I think the timing of it, it could even, maybe it's better to wait until September, or, you know, a little later after the board's had some time and try to move it away a little bit from superintendent. I don't know. I don't know for sure about the scheduling, but I don't think we need to do it in January or even February. I think that's too soon.
I, I would agree. I, and I think maybe, maybe July, as we prepare for a new school year or something, we just kind of take a breather, take a look at ourselves and, okay, let's, let's, let's see what we need, what we can do better, what, what are we doing right? What do we need to do better? And maybe that's the time, we, it's like a six-month checkup, you know?
The, the thing that occurred to me as I was putting this together was, it, would it, would, would it be interesting to see what, if you did it now, or now-ish, what that baseline, because I feel like you have a pretty high-functioning board right now, like, does that give you a baseline of what you want to shoot for in the future? So that you have a comparison. You know, you have five experienced, talented board members who've, who've been on for a while and know board service. So it occurred to me that that might be something to just put to you as well. And maybe you don't have to do like a whole big training around it or any of those things, but maybe you just kind of get your baseline before the election. And then maybe next year this time, you do this, the first one with the new board, and then you have some comparison.
I like that idea. I think we have enough experience now that we could really create a nice tool. And going forward with a, a pretty new board, they, they may not be able to have that insight that we have right now, especially everything we've gone through. I think we've done extremely well. I, I really appreciate our board and could not emphasize that enough. We have been through some really challenging times, and we come out of it, and we're still friends, and we still respect each other, and we still have the ability to come up with decisions in a collaborative way. And I think we are a good example to create that tool.
I'd be interested in looking at ASBA's tool. It looks like it covers things. I just, I don't, we don't need to, I don't know how expensive it is or what the cost is about it, but I feel like if it meets our needs, I don't, I don't want to create, recreate the wheel. I want to use, I want to use a tool that's available.
I agree.
So let me tell you what the process is for that. So to take the, to take the evaluation, it's costing you nothing. There are two different reports. One is an overview report, and it just tells you where you are with each of the five standards. And it gives you that, you know, red, green, yellow, black, blue bar. The detailed report is $250, and it gives you that detail, it gives you every response to every question on the evaluation. Then if you want to do training around it, you get the, you get the detailed report for free, you just have to schedule a three-hour training with ASBA to go through the results.
It seems like we've already done this one other time. Jenny's shaking her head, because I remember going through this process. Probably, Kiana, do you remember that? It was probably before. Marcy, maybe the, or were you in that, too, Marcy?
No.
No, I-
No, no, I was not.
I'd be able to find that. If you did our tool, I would be able to fi- to locate those results and.
Yes, I think we did.
Okay.
Cause I remember this, all of this that you're talking about doing it.
Yeah. And then if you want to do this, that second session of setting goals, you know, you want facilitated conversation around setting of goals. That's another three hours session of training. So. I'm going to leave it with you guys. You let me know if you want to proceed with us. If you don't, that's obviously not a big deal. But it's available if, if it's something that you want to do. I think the last, anything else about that, that you, that anyone wants to talk about? The last thing that we, and I don't have a slide for this because it was, I think we're going to have to do it kind of rapid fire at this point, is we were talking about just board members sharing some of the topics that they'd like to see as study session topics. Is that something you want to do tonight, President Minor?
No, I think two and a half hours, two and a half hours is where your brain starts feeling like enough's enough and we want to let you go and, um, but what I would like to say to that is I, we received everybody's input. Mrs. Sears, I took what you had given to me a few months ago and included that in it. So please look that over and see if that still is what you want or want to add any others. Want to make sure that we get your voice into that and that it's accurate what I took from that document you sent me a few months ago. But I, I would like to do this at another time. If, if that's, that's just my preference, anyone else can chime in on that.
Keeping in mind, we have another governing board meeting tomorrow night. So it'd be nice for you all to be able to see your families a little bit two nights in a row.
That would be, that would be good.
I'm, I'm seeing the subtle shaking of heads saying, yes, let's do this another time.
Yes, please.
You're doing it another time.
Great. Um, well, again, I want to thank you for letting me participate with you and, and work with you around some of the issues that we've done tonight. You will get an evaluation link from Survey Monkey. And please fill that out so we can, um, so I can improve whatever it is that I need to improve. Feedback is a gift.
A gift.
So I got the gift tonight and I feel a lot better.
Yes, exactly. Um, so I am done. I will let you close out your meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. With that, then do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Mrs. Hutchinson?
I second.
Mrs. Sears second. May I for the vote? Mr. Peterson?
Hi.
Mrs. Richardson?
Hi.
Mrs. Hutchinson?
Hi.
And Mrs. Sears?
Hi.
Oh yes, and Mrs. Minor, aye. That concludes our meeting and we are adjourned at 7:37 PM. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you tomorrow night.
See you tomorrow night.
6:30.
6:30.
6:30.
Thank you.